Get this meeting started. It is regular council meeting of June 7th. Do the pledge of allegiance first.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, got a big agenda tonight, so we're gonna get started. Roll call, please.
Mayor Loughlin?
Here.
Councilperson Sexton?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Goodweiler?
Here.
Stolman?
Here.
Guest speaker presentation. We have none, but we have some public comments, so we're gonna move on to public comment. That for you, Ben?
Yeah.
Paul and Deb, are you here for the alley?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have you speak at that time, at the alley. So Ben, go ahead.
Hello?
Ben Leekster?
Leekster.
Employee?
Council members, Mr. Mayor. I'm hoping, I have two concerns tonight, I guess I wanted to address. First of all, I wanted to point out, I don't know if anybody noticed or not, but not this weekend, but the previous weekend, Memorial Day weekend, I was down here for a graduation party, and I was a little disappointed in the appearance of city properties, parks. Cemetery was all right. I guess, I was I was let go last fall for expectations I could not meet. For me, they were a little bit on the low on the totem pole, but I reached out this spring about possibly re-entering employment, and I was told that things were under control. Thusly, leading up to Memorial Day weekend, the lack of priority, I guess. And thus, the appearance, and there's still some of it out there, I guess, that I seen that I guess, from my point of view, as a former employee, that I took part. I was disappointed, I guess, and a little embarrassed that something that for seven years, I took, for lack of a better word, pride in. I don't live here, but like I said, I was one of those that Memorial Day weekend was the second most important weekend of the year for this town, right behind Hoover Days. And we had a plan going in that, you know, even with the weather, I know what the weather was down here, and I guess, from my point of view, you may hate when the sun's shining, so, you know, if there was days that were good, not only that week, but you had weeks prior, like I said, I don't know if there's other notice, but there was places that there was grass and weeds that was over a foot tall. That doesn't happen in a week's time, that happens over the course of time, and I guess, like I said, I've just I still am involved down here, and I guess, I, like I said, I'm a little frustrated by that, that, you know, not only was I, you know, let go for, like I said, things that weren't necessarily under my controls, some of them were, but, you know, then leading into this year, you know, it was lack of priority, whatever you want to call it, that you know, Memorial Day weekend, graduation, cemetery, veterans, you know, there's a lot of people in town, and I guess, I was just, like I said, I was, and maybe, maybe nobody else paying any attention to it, I don't know, but I guess, as an outsider looking in, and like I said, as a former employee, I guess I was like, a little disappointed. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Which leads me to my final point. I guess, because of that, you know, if I am not welcome back here, you know, as an employee, I guess, for, like I said, for seven years of work that I put into this town, I guess, I was kind of hoping to request from the council, the ipers that I lost. Due to the fact that I didn't make it, I was here for seven years, but ipers, you have to be here, you have to be employed seven years plus to be considered vested, and there was a portion of money that, that like I said, that I was denied, I guess. And I guess I was, that was the only benefit I had from working here, that I was kind of hoping that, obviously not for tonight, but just for consideration. You guys, I approached you a year ago with the concern, and you guys took it under advisement, and I truly appreciate it, and if nothing gets done, you know, after this, I'll take it with a grain of salt, and, like I said, move onward and outward, but I guess, like I said, from those two perspectives, for me, like I said, I was, I don't have any, you know, bad blood towards anybody, but I guess, like I said, it's just one of those things that I kind of, like I said, took it to heart being down here, and seeing the, like I said, the lack of priority and everything else, and then, like I said, for me, the time I did put in, I think would be fair, that's, like I said, other than that, I, like I said, that's, those are my, like I said.
I know you worked hard for us, you did great work. I can't speak to the reasons, the why tos and where fors, why you weren't asked to come back, part-time, right? You were part-time?
I was part-time, I was I was, until last year, I was regular part-time, I started out seasonal part-time, and then after a couple of years, I changed to regular part-time, year-round, and then I was moved back to seasonal part-time, for, like I said.
As far as the ipers payment, I, I don't know what our control is.
Like I said, I, I don't know, like I said, it's, it's a thing that you guys, what I was, like I said, it's a portion that city paid into the program that, like I said, after seven years, I could start to draw on, and you know, I mean, granted, I guess, to me, it's, you know, it's money lost, and, you know, you guys paid it on my behalf for me, and, you know, yes, it is, it, it's like I said, there's nothing you can do about it, but I guess, some kind of retribution is what I was hoping to seek, as far as, like I said, for the effort and the work I did put in, but like I said, I, I do understand there's guidelines.
Okay, well, we'll talk about it. I don't know, behind, I'll talk about it with Redmond.
I appreciate it.
I don't really expect a whole lot.
Like I said.
You can look into it.
I, like I said, I don't, like I said, I know there's, there's not a policy on it, but like I said, as far as if you want to call it severance, you know, any type of, I guess, from my perspective, if it had been like a budget thing, or, you know, I quit, I see that as being out of my control, but I guess, from the fact that I did put in seven solid years, and, you know, if, if they're, like I said, I truly, I, I will understand, I know there's guidelines, I know there's policies. I guess, like I said, I was.
All right, so. Thanks, Ben, I guess that's.
I appreciate it.
We'll check into it.
I, like I said, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak publicly, except for the alley issue? Before us. Okay. During none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Page two. To approve the meeting minutes of the last council meeting of May 17th. To approve the meeting minutes of a closed session of May 20th. To approve a motion for class C beer, class B native wine, and Sunday sales privilege for Parkside Petroleum at 401 Parkside Drive. To approve a class E liquor license, a class B wine, and class C beer, and Sunday sales privileges for come and go. Approve cigarette permit renewals, which is listed in our agenda here. And payment of a nuisance abatement invoice for 320, 332 North Downey and 203 Green Street. And the claims report, so give me a motion somewhere, we can talk about any of the, or.
Remove.
Second.
Nick will second. Okay. I don't know how to pick this apart. Nuisance abatement. Swift and Swift. They sent us an invoice for the work, for work to mow a couple of lawns. It was probably after Memorial Day, so, that's why it was so long. Redmond showed it to me, I said, absolutely no way, this is way too high. Sent it back with revisions, which they've done. Still too high, in my mind, that's all I'm gonna say right now, if anybody else has something that they want to input.
Is it true that they, they billed us 48 hours to
Yeah.
to mow that?
To mow a corner lot, 48 man-hours. That's you sitting on a mower for six days, eight hours a day.
I can, it takes me 48 hours to mow four to five acres.
Cemetery, a whole, oh, no. I just don't get it.
I have a personal problem, this conscience, charging a dude 1,200 bucks to mow his yard.
That seems like a lot, doesn't it?
Seems like a lot. I'm not, I can't, it's him.
Go ahead.
I would like to say that last year, we billed out $688, and that included a $250 penalty.
So it's 480, 430, about dollars of mowing, pretty much.
So we have an additional 250 on top of the 1,200 that we're charging?
Well, we
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a penalty involved that we can assess.
It might even be more than that, because it's supposed to be reoccurring.
The next one's higher, maybe. So right now, they're, they're wanting basically 1,200 dollars to mow not even a quarter acre lot.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't get it, how, how you can even fathom that much time?
Because they were, they made multiple trips, is that part of the reason?
Yeah.
And why did they make multiple trips?
I think he was online. I believe, I believe Swift and Swift's online.
Where they work, man.
Well, if he wants.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, say, say what you want to say.
Uh, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have. There's nothing that I wanted to say, those numbers are correct. Other than, you know, if you're gonna compare it to what you did last year, how long was that grass? Because the grass that I cut was just about inches, and it was raining. And it had been raining for probably seven days before that.
Well, I would think that's a choice you made. I mean, if it was already 10 inches tall, what would, why'd you come out?
Yes, sir. Why didn't I come out and do what?
Why would you come out when it's raining, when it's already 10 inches tall? What's, what's a day or two gonna hurt?
If it's already. I only come out when the city calls me. And I will. I only come out when the city calls me. From what I understood, it was, we had to do it.
No, I, I called him during the week, but he has a contract to respond in 48 hours. Based on, based on our, our contract, so he, he met that timeline.
How many fewer hours would it take if it was dry? Right now, you're billing us for oh, initially it's 48 minus 11, what is that, 37 man-hours? Are you, are you down to that 37 man-hours?
I believe that's correct.
20 man-hours on Green Street, 48 on North Downey.
Let's stick to Green Street right now, that's, you're right.
Oh, you're talking to Green?
Green Street was.
So that's 37 man-hours. I still have a problem, serious problem. Of, of how it can take someone so long, even in the rain, to mow one, a quarter acre lot with a house on it. Just have a problem.
One on Green, did the inside of the fence get mowed too, or just the outside?
Both got mowed, inside and out.
So I mowed the corner lot once last year, on my own.
Yes, you did.
And it was probably six inches to eight inches high then, it was dry, it took me an hour. So yeah, I have concerns here. If you push mowed it, yeah, we used a brush hog.
So yeah, you, I used brush hogs to knock down the high grass, and then you have to pick up all the grass, did you pick up the grass also, or did you just knock it down?
I did not pick up the grass.
Hmm, yeah, I'm not making up any extra hours on the labor that it took to do this according to what I was instructed to do, via contract, and, you know, so those are the actual hours, and that's all I can say. I picked it up.
Guys, you had on, onsite when you were doing this?
What's that?
How many, how many men, or how many employees did you have on this, on?
It was a total, it was a total of three people onsite. For the first day, and then the other two subsequent days, it was two people, each of those other two days.
And just to, kind of just clarify and point, the picture that you have here, that's the picture of when the notice went out, that's not the picture of before they cut. So, that picture is after, I mean, before, seven days of rain, or however, it was raining that week. And it's already pretty high, you can see.
When he mowed it, it was fire hydrant high, so
That's correct.
Three inches.
Yeah.
Well, it's, the yardstick there says 10, 10-ish, maybe 11 inches, 10 inches.
I mean, nobody's, nobody's assuming whether it didn't need mowed, and it wasn't gonna be a lot of work.
Right.
I just.
We're questioning the time. I mean, a high school kid could mow that in a couple of hours, and rake it in a couple more hours. And you're charging 37 hours. It's just.
I don't believe that's the case.
Okay, so are we at task here to either approve this or disapprove it?
Uh, yes, that's on the consent calendar, so if you want to vote on this separately, I'd approve the rest of the items, and vote on this separately.
I still don't want to approve it. So, I still don't want to approve it, I'm serious. It's just something wrong. So. How do you want to proceed?
I.
Let's, um let's, um, we can pass all the other stuff, whoever did the motion, Colton?
I have a motion that we strike number six.
Correct.
And we vote on that separately. I need a second.
Either tonight, or, yeah. Okay, so he's modifying his motion. Do I need to vote on that, then?
I just, no, you're gonna vote on one through five and seven only.
Okay, so right now, we're gonna consider one through five and seven. Is there any more discussion?
Yes.
And then we'll discuss number six.
Yes.
Separately.
I have a question about ice machine, that we paid 200 and some dollars for repair. And I'm assuming that that ice machine was in our brand-new concession stand?
No. No. It was at the fire station.
Okay.
And getting serviced every year.
That's fine, that's fine, I guess, if we was paying a repair bill on a brand-new life every year, you know, I was gonna ask some questions.
Okay, any other discussion on items one through five, and claims report number seven? None, let's proceed to vote on those six items. Leslie?
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stolman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay. So now, it will be item number six of the consent agenda, do I have a motion to, I guess you usually get a motion to approve.
Right.
And, in a second.
Motion to approve or motion to discuss?
You need a motion to approve.
We need a motion to approve, and then it.
Then we can discuss.
Yeah.
Then we can discuss, and you vote yes or no to approve. I guess it could die for lack of motion.
I motioned last time, I ain't gonna do it this time.
Then what happens? Colton does a lot of do it this time.
You can do the motion, then when you take the vote, whoever made the motion will vote no.
Obviously.
Go ahead.
Give me a motion.
I make a motion that we discuss this.
Hang on, you're not up yet.
Okay, thank you.
You say second, Nick, I just pointed that.
I do now.
Okay, Tom motions, and Nick seconds to, uh he just said discuss.
We'll just discuss.
Discuss and act on item number six, which is the abatement note, mowing invoices.
Can I suggest something, maybe?
Yes, please, please.
So we have this item that says 37 and a half, why don't we ask for a further breakdown to show times that the employees were there, so we could at least, you know, does he have payroll records to show that? That would be a further proof than just a block sum of 37 and a half. And I didn't know if you had an issue with the Green Street one.
Yeah, that's, same issue.
Okay, well, the only thing with the Green Street one is they have to move junk that's in the yard to move around, so. That's a different animal.
But Green Street was. Well, yeah, I mean, they.
That's what a breakdown we want, or not, I'm just saying.
Initially, charged us for 11 hours of driving.
Yeah.
And, and the same job was nine and a half hours of driving, to the same.
We're talking Davenport?
Yeah. Three times.
I could go to Des Moines and back two or three times at that time.
Okay, so, I gotta get organized here. This is up for discussion. Anything, anybody want to?
So if either one of these residents was to walk in here with their bill, I understand that they're the ones that let their property get the way it did, but I'd be ashamed to tell them that they owe us that much. That's all I gotta say, whether the guy did the work, and, and, and it's, you know, the guy did the work, I mean, we all, we all agree with that, you know, it's mowed, you know, but there's, there's gotta be a better way of doing this.
Well, the city mowed it once before, and we charged them 430 dollars. It was pretty long then. This is 1,200 dollars. Three times.
No, it's actually 1,400, almost 1,500 dollars.
How many times did the city want?
I mean, I'm eliminating the 255.
Oh.
430 bucks, we mowed it for approximately in the past.
Three times.
We've mowed it.
430 dollars for one time.
One time.
One time.
The first time, probably, when it was long.
The second time they did it, it was half added.
We may have picked it up and raked it too, that first time.
So, so the first, the first cuts always the tallest, because we have to give them time and notice. After that, based on our new ordinance, once it gets past six inches, we can automatically cut without any further notice.
How long does the whole process take? From the time you started until you can cut the first go?
Probably a total of 14 days.
They have 10 days, they have 10 days to appeal.
You have to have appeal time.
Those people, the mowers should be on call on day nine, be ready to go on day 10. In my mind, like 14 days, maybe it rained in between.
I mean, there was that, there was rain delays.
It's gotta be six inches tall in order for it to meet the abatement regulations. So it's six inches, you send out the letter, it rains for a week.
Well, except that, if you notice, the grass was seeded, once it goes to seed, it don't grow that much anymore.
It wasn't 14, this was, this should have been done a month earlier, the whole process. Should have been done a month earlier.
I mean, once, once grass goes to seed, that's, growth's done.
This, this guy's a, they're both repeat offenders, we know they're coming, we know, we know when to look for them. And it should never have gotten this bad. Okay, so, we have a motion to.
I'm not just, just counting that, I mean, the only question I have is he did 37 hours of work, regardless, we think it should have been earlier, doesn't change the fact that the guy still had 37 hours of work. I agree, it should have been done way earlier, but that doesn't change the fact that the work was still done, regardless if it's our fault for being late to it, or whatever, he still had them coming, I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm just saying that's the hours he came up with. I don't know how, maybe Kevin can answer.
I'm seriously questioning 37 hours of work.
That's what's doing me my question. Are 37, is that just for one property, or for the whole? One. Okay, so, three guys, 37 hours, that's over 12 hours.
A 10-hour day.
That's 12 hours.
Well, except they came three times.
Yeah, they came three times.
And I don't, to be honest with you guys, I don't know if there's any way we can get out of not paying this, the guy gets, the guy gave us the invoice.
I agree.
The only thing we can say is, you ain't doing no more work for us.
No, this is still too high, I, I question it.
Then we gotta figure out what you're gonna send to the property owners to pay back.
We're gonna give them the bill, we're gonna give them the bill.
They're gonna pay the bills on some fine.
You go talk to this guy.
I'm just saying, that's the next step we have to do.
Okay, I would ask Swift and Swift.
But they chose to let the grass get out.
I, I completely agree with you, this is a, this is a problem of their own making.
Right.
Yeah, I completely agree with you. I guess I'd be embarrassed if I was the company in charge, 37 hours to move a small yard like this.
The other property was 20 hours minus
would it end up being 29 hours?
Nine and a half, I don't know.
You make, choose one sometimes.
20 man-hours. To mow Green Street is completely unreasonable. With 36-inch wide bush hogs, or, I don't know how big they are, they got like a 30 or 36-inch gate, but you could push that with a 21-inch mower, and not spend 20 hours doing it. I used to mow cemeteries, and when my mower brought down, I pushed them 21 inches at a time.
I went up and mowed that cemetery in Davenport, that, that, they quit taking care of, and it got all tall. There was a friend of mine's dad was buried out there, and we took two push mowers and did probably a lot as big as this, where this whole building sits. And we were there three hours, and we raked it up, and we weeded it around the tombstones, and.
Okay, so, we, we're gonna vote on this, and either yes, accept it, or no, deny it, which means he needs to resubmit a new bill. Didn't work that way?
Work whatever way you want it, with further breakdown.
If we vote no, what happens?
Come back again, with another bill.
That's not messing, I wanna vote no, or yes, and then not know what in the world's gonna happen after we vote no. Or yes, or whatever. Obviously, yes is obvious, if you vote yes, it gets a bill. No, I don't really understand what repercussions are, what we can do.
No repercussions to us.
We could ask for a further breakdown, or we could just say, you know. We could ask for a further breakdown or we could just say, you know.
Sharpen your pencil.
They could take us to court too. I'm just saying that's all the, all the.
That's fine, then we'll, he'll need documentation on it.
So.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'm ready to vote. We got a long meeting ahead of us.
Instead of vote no, do we wanna ask for more information? Just table it?
Table it and that's it.
That's, the end result's gonna be another bill.
It's gonna be the same bill. Why you gonna change it, Bill?
Because it needs to be a little more accurate. Uh, Gordon.
I was just gonna ask if you can't negotiate with him.
Sure we could.
Well, that's, that's an alternative.
I'm not gonna do it right here, right now.
If we're gonna do that, we need to table it and just bring it back next time for final vote and be done.
Not this bill though. I don't want a table and bring back this bill.
If he, if he doesn't change it, then you'd have to vote yea or nay on the same bill.
Vote no, and he can submit a new bill.
Um, I'm gonna ask to say something.
Go ahead.
From what I hear you guys saying is there is a discrepancy in your belief of what happened versus what the truth is, is what's on that paper. So if you're asking me to take my bill back and then lie to you about what the actual cost was.
No, we're not asking you to lie to us.
Okay.
Asking one bit.
Okay, the bill is accurate. It is true. If you don't wanna pay it, that's your prerogative. But the bill is true. It's, it's for real. It was totally out of control that, that house.
Yeah, we've been there before, about four years, four years in a row.
Oh, wow.
Been doing this for four years.
I understand.
This much to have it mowed.
It's a year's worth of mowing there.
Was it ever that high and left un, unmowed for so long?
It was probably three inches or shorter.
Yeah. I just, yeah, yeah, I, I just use. I cut it, I picked it up and that's what I did. Oh, yeah, the other thing is, here in Davenport, we're not allowed to throw grass off into the right of way into the streets and all of that to go into the manholes. I don't know if that's been told to you guys, but that's the methodology that has been used. I'm sure I included it on my bill. We, we pushed the grass back into the middle, mulched it and picked it up. Wet grass, tons of wet grass. That was an emergency nuisance that needed to be done. If there's some other method that we could have just thrown it out into the street then.
Gonna pick it up, gonna throw it out.
Yeah.
Gonna pick it up right away.
Yeah, that's what we did. You gotta cut it down before you can pick that much grass up.
It wasn't picked up that same day that you cut it.
We got, we got rained out the first day, yeah, Sunday. That's why we had to come back the second day.
I'm just ready to take a vote.
I personally don't wanna pay it, but I have no way to prove that he did not have that many man hours. I can't prove it, so.
Logical common sense doesn't.
That doesn't mean, common sense doesn't mean this.
We don't have to prove that he didn't. If he wants to take us to court, then he has to prove that he spent those hours.
His bill. If it matches his pay records, boom, he proved it. And I'm not saying I'm happy with it, I just don't understand how we take something like that to.
Okay, Swift and Swift will come up later in the agenda, so. Let's take a vote. Ready to vote? Move on.
All right, so this is to discuss and act on.
This is to pay the bill.
This is to approve the payment.
Okay.
Yes approves it, no does not.
Councilperson Dean?
No.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes. Miller?
No.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We will pay the bill. All right, let's move on. This is what you get voted in for. It's all right, we're doing fine.
Yeah.
All right, public hearing. Consent, non-consent agenda. Item one is a.
Next on one thing.
Yep.
Next time we use local.
That'll come up.
It's coming up. We'll have this discussion.
Coming up later in the meeting.
I promise.
And we will.
Thank you.
Okay, second reading of ordinance seven eighty one, pending chapter one sixty five entitled zoning regulations. Adds section fifty one annexed territory. Motion please, someone?
Someone.
Second, that's a Nick. This is the second, excuse, second reading. I don't have anything to add or subtract. Any other discussion?
Just real quick, I wanted to mention that we did take this to P and Z at our last P and Z meeting per your recommendation and they had no problems with it, so.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Uh, let's go ahead and vote then, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand eight approving two percent, a two percent cost of living adjustment. And setting salaries for appointed officials and employees of the city of West Ranch, Iowa for the next fiscal budget here. Um, I need a motion, please.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Okay, wait a second. Miller, Nick?
Yeah, that's right. You got that?
Well, I saw Jerry do it first though.
Um, any discussion? I don't have any input.
Somebody just talked about raises. Somebody just talked about raises.
We do. This is our, this is where we actually adopt the raises.
I think I ask this every year.
I, I do too.
It's just, this is just making the formal, yeah. This is red tape, blah, blah.
Yeah. Um, I know Gordon won't be here. But we still adopted salary and.
Yeah, because he's, he'll be in this last pay period of, of, actually the first pay period of fiscal year twenty two, so that's why.
Any other discussion? Let's go ahead.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
All right, resolution two thousand nine. Approving to add J and D Lawn Care, Rocha Lawn Care and Casper Lawn Care. And renewing Swift and Swift as the list of contractors to be deployed for nuisance abatement services as deemed appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to strike renewing Swift and Swift as list contractors and just add JD Lawn Care, Roka Lawn Care and Casper Lawn Care.
And that could be part of a motion.
That's my motion.
Your motion, okay. Jerry seconds. Um, okay. Now, have these other three been contacted?
Yes, so, um, just wanna make a point. Swift and Swift does most of the other type of abatements.
We'll find somebody else.
As lawn care companies wouldn't do the other type of abatement, abatements, this is mostly for high grass, those other companies.
Well, this whole resolution is for contractors to be employed for nuisance, okay, into any nuisance abatement, all right. Okay, the motion still stands. So they've been contacted, these other three, but we don't have a actual contract with them yet.
But they agreed to work for twenty nine dollars.
They agreed to basically use the same agreement that we had.
So then, if we, if we pass this, then contractors will have to go out to them. Is that right? Or we can just, just a phone call.
Just a phone call, phone call and just, you know, verify that this is what the right's gonna be.
So.
Yes.
Yeah. So I would like to, and this maybe, it has to do with this, correlates with this, but maybe not this particular resolution. Is that maybe no matter who we use, they should come out and at least give us a ballpark on what it's gonna take.
Before the word.
Before the word starts.
Well, we have ten days of the homeowner actually saying something, you know, getting.
They have ten days to appeal.
We also can use that ten days to get an estimate on what a contractor would think.
And we don't have to, and we don't have to use get three estimates, just a ballpark figure. So we don't get a forty six hour invoice to mow a yard.
Why can't we just make it simple and just say, mow a yard.
Two hundred, two hundred dollars.
Yeah, four hundred dollars, whatever. I mean, just put a limit on what they, what they can charge. I mean. It's six inches or twelve inches. You got a little more grass, but it's gonna take the same amount to cut it down.
Right.
It's gonna take a little more time to pick it up, but.
We gotta go over it twice if it's too long.
Yeah, cuz we just went full load or just. Still, I mean.
Okay, so those are all good suggestions. We can still approve this tonight though. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready to vote. If there's no more discussion. Does any, is everyone clear with the striking Swift and Swift?
Is that a separate?
No.
That's the way the motion sits.
So we don't have to do anything. Yeah. We'll find somebody.
I just like the fact that regardless of the previous conversation, it doesn't make sense to go that far away. Exactly. We have people I can do it in town.
Yeah.
Especially when somebody starts this mobilization.
I mean, that's, regardless of the previous discussion, I just think we got, sure there's probably companies, even West Liberty, Iowa City.
Yes.
It might be a little bit cheaper regardless of, yeah, like you said, the previous thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this makes more sense to keep it in, money in town if we're gonna do it than send it somewhere else.
I'm ready to vote. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Okay, Hoover Days contracts. Resolution twenty ten approving contracts totaling ten thousand one hundred fifty five dollars. For the Hoover Hometown Days events. Motion somewhat. Tom and Jerry? Thank you, nice job.
There we go, I've started something.
So is this, is this the total of expenses for, we're gonna have, or we got more coming in?
All those fireworks, we all already approved.
I mean, without fireworks.
Well, there might be more. No, there'll probably be more.
There've been several approved so far. This is probably running towards the end.
Yeah.
This is the big stuff.
Melissa, anything?
I would, yeah, I was just gonna say, this, this should be about the end of the contracts. There'll be some nickel and dime things coming in, like the, the banners. Advertising, our sponsors, things like that, that'll come in, but, but there shouldn't be any other contracts that I can think of.
Yeah, the question, this is, this relates to this. Have we done our fund, did we do fundraising last year?
Nothing.
Are we going to do any this year?
We're making progress. Leslie's got a letter out, fifty or more.
I think Leslie can address the fundraising. I think it's going pretty well.
I did send out about fifty letters typically to the people who just donated last year and we've gotten a commitment for someone to be our.
Did donate last year?
No, I'm sorry, the previous year, the previous year. No, we didn't get that far. We had, we already knew we were gonna cancel it. But this year we do have a commitment from Nordex to be our title sponsor, which is a five thousand dollar donation. Um, we got both stages, I'm sorry, one stage already covered and then we've gotten some larger donations, so they're, they're, they're coming in. And the website's being updated, so if you're interested in who's donating, you can go out to the Hoover Days website and you can see all the names.
Yeah, we've never had a five thousand dollar donor.
Oh, we did.
For a long, long time. So Nordex is really stepping up.
Do you, do you have a round number of what? You had approved so far? With, if approving this, total amount for that?
Oh, what, what we've received in donations so far?
No, or expenses of.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
For tonight, so. We're gonna roughly be somewhere around twenty thousand.
Plus, plus fireworks.
Plus the fireworks.
Looking back at the previous years, we spent. Yeah.
Okay, um, any other discussion on these contracts? I can't wait to see what the hatchet throwing is all about.
They're throwing hatchets, man.
Um, hearing no discussion, let's vote please.
Councilperson Dean?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman? Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Partial alley closing, resolution two, twenty eleven. Approving a partial alley closure. This is the between, uh, the south end of an alley between fourth and fifth streets. We all know where it's at. So, uh, there it is on the map. I guess to get the talk started, any motion please? Motion, was that Jerry?
Yeah.
How about you, Tom?
I'm sorry.
Second. Okay, um.
What was the motion? I didn't hear the motion.
So we, we motioned to approve it. That doesn't mean, you have to motion to, you always have to motion to approve.
I just didn't hear it, sorry.
I'm sorry. The motion was to approve the closing. And then we either vote yes or no from there. Um, Paul Deppen, Nikolowski?
Malowski. Thank you.
The CH is silent?
Yeah.
Malowski, okay, come up and then, um, if you wanna speak on this subject, we'll start with you guys first. Oh, you are, go ahead. And you live at one sixteen North Fifth Street, is that next to you, Hillary? You're on fourth.
Right.
Okay. All right. Is yours the driveway? The farthest south driveway? Off of that alley?
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want me to point it out at Betty?
Yeah, I get, I'm just curious. I don't know.
I don't know.
I got into it, now I gotta finish it.
Got into it, now he wants to.
And John and Beth are here.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I don't know where you folks are.
In the backyards, yeah. Okay. Um, so you're curious as to what our plans are? So our current plan is to. Close the alley and seed it at least up to.
Thank you, guys.
No.
Yes.
Yeah.
Why are you moving it?
Oh, I, I was trying to widen it up so you can see where we're gonna.
You're blocking it. Those two red lines are the end, that's a.
Yeah, that's what we're proposing is, is close this and that ramp, so you can still access your properties if you're just one way in, one way out.
Want to explain why? Extreme gravel washout.
The grades, the grade doesn't meet code. It's really not even all that usable anyway, I mean, how many of you guys use that ramp, really?
You go up it?
No, not, sometimes, but only if the north end is blocked.
Why would it be blocked?
Because of deliveries or, you know, whatever, different things, people use the alley.
People having guests, so.
People having guests, yeah.
You're not supposed to park in the alley.
I'm not saying that, but a delivery truck will park in the alley to deliver, so, and when service people come to work on our houses.
Swager Appliance used it, uh, just last Friday to deliver appliances, uh, Bruce Bernhardt used both ends for our property just a week and a half ago. And, uh, we plan on having cement work done in August, and that's our concern, and it doesn't only wash out down at the bottom, I know that's what everybody sees in the street, it washes up top, too, it's rutted. Our contractors who come in, uh, size tree service, they fixed it last time they were here a month and a half ago for us, just so they could make it passable, and so did Bruce Bernhardt, their group kinda cleaned it up, too. So it washes up even higher.
Washes.
We're left with huge ruts that a small car can barely navigate down. So our concern is, is hundred feet, who's going to maintain it, and what happens when the gravel comes down the alley, stops at this hundred foot mark? Who's gonna put the gravel back into our alley, who's gonna fill those significant ruts?
And when that gravel goes in, washes into that grass, who's going to, are you going to mow that grass? With, with all that gravel in it, or are you going to try to scrape that grass to get the gravel back up? It's not the best solution, and, you know, as, I, okay, we've been down this alley before, but back in, back in the nineties, I feel like I'm a hundred and seven when I say that, but when Dick Rexswit was, uh, the mayor, we worked out something with him, cuz at that time, we thought it was a private alley, we worked out something with him to get it chip sealed when they were doing streets, and that lasted at least fifteen years, and so there was no washout, nothing like that, and that, to me, seems like the better solution. Because what you're doing won't stop the rock, and it'll just add grass to your maintenance.
So, the chip and seal thing, ma'am, I, I don't, I don't, maybe they do it different now than they did in the nineties, but we do chip and seal on Fourth Street down past.
Right.
And I manage the Mobile Home Court, and I take dump truckloads of gravel every time they chip seal it, cuz it runs down that hill, and it comes around the corner, and it runs down.
Yeah, I know you've said that in the past, and I don't doubt that.
So I don't see how that's going to change the gravel issue here.
Well, when you're using that little rock, and you've got that embedded in the ceiling, then it doesn't wash like it does.
Except you'll never create the traffic on that alley to compact that little stone, if you couldn't do it on Fourth Street, you're not gonna do it on that alley.
You know what, if you left it there long enough, and then came and swept up the extra, then it would be, it would be done, it lasted a really long time, and it was to everybody's satisfaction. What's happening now is to nobody's satisfaction, the ruts are incredible, and yet, as you say, I mean, that is a hazard down on the street, on Main Street, when it washes out, so you may keep the gravel from not making it to Fourth Street, but you're still, don't, you haven't eliminated or lessened your maintenance at all. And you have made us less happy, because we do use that, and we, you know, we have relatives who use it, we have delivery people, I mean, and, and we know that that's steep, and that's a limitation, but it has worked for, what, you know, seventy-five, eighty, ninety years, I mean, it works. It's not great, but it works.
There are seven households in that one block area that their only access is through that alley.
Right.
On Fourth Street, there's no parking on either side, so the only thing we, they have is the alley.
That's our alley, that's all we have.
That's their street.
You wanna buy it?
What?
You wanna buy it?
You know, I mean, how much, does it actually cost for the, for the skid loader to keep moving the rubble, is there a cost for that every year that they have to do that?
Yes and no.
Yeah.
I mean, it's hard to tell, I'm sure, cuz you don't know when it's gonna wash down based on how.
We pay them dues anyway, so, they get paid anyway.
Well, every rainstorm, they gotta go around and pick up the gravel, it washes down from every alley, it was about four of them.
My question is, living there through eleven winters, um, it's hard to go up that alley after a snowstorm and an ice storm. And I, for many years, didn't have a four-wheel drive vehicle, and all our neighbors, I had gotten stuck on that alley so many times.
You guys don't live there anymore, do you?
That's not the point, the only way.
You haven't lived there for years.
The only way you can leave is to go up, anybody on that alley, the only way we can leave is to go up, you know, and I do not recall us being first on the plow list or the saw list or anything, you know, that time, and, um,
If you live in Iowa City, Iowa City does nothing to their alleys, they don't maintain them, they don't snowplow them, they, they absolutely. I know, but, we could set that example, we could, I'm not proposing to do that, do nothing with alleys.
Okay, so, I'm the one that brought this, so, I would like to make a compromise. If we were to actually maintain it and put gravel in, and we tree sap it, not chip and seal, but we tree sap it, and we maintain it, we still get to close the south end, to me, it's a safety issue coming down that on the inter, or on the interstate, wow, on the main street? I, I truly believe it's a, it's a safety issue.
I don't believe there's ever been an accident there in the thirty-five years you've been here, but I understand what you're saying, and, um, what I would say is what you're doing is eliminating an emergency exit for me.
No, I.
And so, and me, too, I, that's, if there's only one way in and out, then.
But if you grass, if you grass twenty, thirty feet, if it's an emergency, you'll drive through that grass.
Does that mean you're gonna raise up the grass to the level of the yards there? What does that mean, does that mean, what, what, what does that mean?
Remove the gravel down twelve inches and put in decent dirt.
So it'll still be low like that, you're not gonna infill it all?
There's not going to be a fire truck that will go up that.
Correct.
And a fire truck will not go down it. An ambulance will not go up it, and an ambulance will not go down it.
And, and what I'm saying is if.
Only a police vehicle would be the pickup, maybe? So.
What, what if we just, if, could we tree sap it first, and see how it goes this summer?
If we, if we maintain it properly, fill the potholes and put trees out, is that, is that good for you guys, or?
But it hasn't been maintained up till this point, the only reason that we get any gravel is because it's washed down to Main Street and taken back up the hill. So if the promise is to maintain it, I'd like to see a.
But, but if we.
That's not what she's asked, that's not what she's asking.
If we tree sap it, it shouldn't wash down as much.
Okay, so, that, that sounds, that sounds fine, um, so are you saying that we're going to put a grass strip in there where it's shown on there, and you're going to leave the exit down for emergencies?
Yes, that was what I was proposing.
You know, I think we could live with that, so that it's there if we need it, but, and so there's no barricade, there's nothing like that, you just go over the grass and down if you need to. I mean, I think that, I think that, I, we'd be happy with that, but I don't know.
Are we talking taking the concrete out? Leaving the sidewalk, leaving the concrete there, at least for now.
Yeah, so no barricades.
Leave, leave the concrete, concrete coming from the sidewalk down to Main Street for now.
With grass being between the sidewalks.
She has a valid point. The gravel's gonna wash down there in the grass, in the grass, it's not gonna be able to mow.
I know. Maybe in addition to that, we can tree sap the rest of it, to avoid washout.
It seems to me that, if you go all the way up the alley and look, the reason it washes is because everything is working its way down to the street, whether the garages and the driveways that are in there are too high, all the water runs off of them and runs in, into the alley. I know it's a hill, it's gonna wash water.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, the city could go in there and, and put gravel on there, but it seems to me that the issue may be even on the sides of the alley.
See, it always becomes bigger, and so nobody ever tries anything, and so we've stopped at this point so many years, because it's like, well, now we need to do this, and now we need to asphalt, and now we need, and now we need to light, and you know, and so then nothing gets done, and so, I mean, any kind of first step that you think you can do, we can try it and see how it works. It just needs to be better than it is.
Well, I, I drove up and down the alley today, and I thought, honest, from what I know, we got hard surface roads that are in worse shape than that alley. I mean, it, there wasn't, I figured there was gonna be great big potholes, I mean, it's a little rough to the north going up on where, to the approach, but other than that, it was a lot better than I had expected.
Well, and, uh, you should try it in the winter, also.
If that's the real dilemma that we need, is.
There's some potholes up in the north end.
Yeah, that's what I said in the morning.
It doesn't melt because of the garage.
It melts a little bit, it becomes an ice slick, so are you also saying?
We can't control that.
You have, I, I agree, you guys have complained, yes, and I've listened, and that's why I'm willing to offer this, that we maintain it correctly.
Yeah, I think that that sounds, that sounds fine, we're.
But we also, we, we've talked.
Just don't tell us no again.
And that we leave the cement approach for now, for emergencies, but we grass it between the sidewalk to the north, whatever.
Sixty, eighty feet, fifty.
And we tree sap it, is that it, okay?
I think that's a good first step, if the tree sap doesn't do it, or you might have to do it more often or whatever.
I don't know, am I wrong?
No, it sounds like a good idea.
Like the best control, I may be wrong, I don't know.
But it sticks, it sticks in the concrete, in front of houses, it's that brown stuff.
Yeah, it's not really, well, it just, it depends on.
It may not in a gully washing rain, a heavy, heavy rain, it may not.
It takes, it takes several treatments, more years to hold.
But I'm telling you.
Traffic helps keep it.
Chip and seal ain't gonna be any better.
You gotta start somewhere.
Okay, um.
Chip and seal, you have to have a traffic on topic.
Okay, that's. Hang on a minute. Okay.
I don't know.
Has there ever been a proposal to, to regrade it, I just, I just don't know, like, so say, you take where the sidewalk is, and you go twenty feet back, and you start the angle differently there, which would mean digging a skid and digging it out more and changing the angle from further back to make it less of a.
You start of changing the angle, it makes it steeper somewhere else. It's about the right angle you're gonna, gonna get.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious about that, like, if we didn't close it, that would be.
Is there about there?
Roger, could you?
Is there concrete approaches to the garages?
Some have them, some don't, that was what I was kinda, gonna see, there was, a couple guys had some like beautiful driveways back there. And then there's some of them are just gravel lots, I mean, there's a little collection of all kinds.
How many properties we looking at?
Seven or eight.
Some have a driveway on that alley, and that's their only driveway to the drop.
And the people across the alley from us at four eleven also are not excited about this project.
And they also suggested regrade it.
Here's the thing about regrading is there's so many givens, if you just start messing with grade, that water's going somewhere.
It's still a slope.
And then what are we gonna create?
I mean, you can terrace it. Okay, um, so what do we have before, so we have, uh, we have a, a motion to approve a partial closure. Still on board with that?
So.
And, I'm not sure where we're at.
Why wouldn't, why won't we, uh, talk to Matt, and maybe have Matt come up with some kind of plan that?
Do we know how many feet this is, one end to the other?
The total length of it? It's block long.
A city block.
Thirty-two. Short city. Start adding up numbers.
Turn to add.
A hundred and seventy.
One forty.
Plus.
Eighty. About four hundred feet.
Yeah. Is this, can anybody tell me, in, in our community, is this the, this alley, is this the biggest alley that we have in town that supports the residents?
One up on.
Cookson Drive.
Behind Wayne Paulson's old house.
They closed that, didn't they?
No, not that many of them. It's like, no. No, cuz I own that much of these properties. There's like four on each side, there's eight.
Eight properties.
They mentioned Ricky's.
Seven or eight. That's, that's the other nightmare.
Right.
Besides territory.
Tarantrel has closed that one in.
Yeah, cuz it is, yeah.
Yeah, but it still washes out.
Could somebody make a suggestion that pending this kind of thing, don't call it a partial closure? Because there are implications in closing an alley, because then, like, you give it back to the homeowners and that kind of thing.
That's.
So, um, it's probably better to just try this and see if it works, and then work on a partial closure in the future.
I see what you're saying. Thank.
Yeah, to give it back would be vacating the road, which we're not doing.
Okay, I'm trying to formulate what our end result here is, um, do we still wanna grass it or not?
I, I think grassing it, um, and still having gravel on there is just a mistake, it's not gonna be able to be mowed.
It's gonna, Hillary's exactly right, it's gonna wash down.
It's gonna wash into the gra, the grass, and not. Then they're gonna have to dig the grass out to get the gravel out, and then they're gonna have an even bigger.
Or go up higher, farther and farther, and who's gonna mow it?
We'll see, we'll have to see.
We're gonna have to mow it.
City has to.
You'd have to raise it up, if you were gonna make it work, you'd have to raise it up.
We table this for now and get a plan from Matt? For.
Well, either way, it needs to be maintained better than what it is. I agree with them, it does.
Well, I'm gonna suggest we table it. Table it for now, we, we, we're not gonna make a good decision right now, I just feel like we're not getting anywhere.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, thanks for listening to us, we appreciate it.
We really appreciate it.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
Um, whose, whose motion?
Jerry. Jerry, Tom.
How do we go about that?
Just, you wanna table it, Jerry?
Yeah, I, uh, make the motion that we table this resolution for now, and bring it back at a later date.
I'll second that.
Okay. To vote on that?
Yes.
I would, I would like for them, for Matt, to work, somehow, maybe you guys form a couple people that are.
Matt would know what to do, Matt'll know what to do.
I, I know, but, give them, let them have some input.
That would be great, input would be great, and I, also, we really appreciate the letters from Redmond, are we going to be told again when you're going to?
You should be, yeah.
Before we do anything finalized.
Okay, we're gonna vote on the tabling, and then we're done with this subject. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Okay.
Be careful coming down it, on the Main Street, cuz I did have somebody pull out. Be careful coming down it, on the main street, because I did have somebody pull out in front of somebody the other day.
Leo?
Yeah. So.
So as long as people keep their yards mowed, then, you know, you can see that. That's another subject.
You're exactly right.
We talked about that. Listen to that, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
See ya.
All right, resolution twenty twelve. Concerns the hiring of Heidi Van Alken as the Finance Officer Treasurer for the City of West Branch, and setting the salary for the position of, for the fiscal year, the next fiscal year. Give me a motion, someone?
So moved.
Nick will second. Heidi is here with us this evening, that's her sitting quietly back in the.
Hey, to lady.
Real question.
You came to a great meeting.
It was, actually was great, and it was very interesting to.
Yeah, I guess the question is, you still want?
I do. Roger, so, yeah, my name is Heidi Van Alken, I am so happy to be here, I'm very excited to, to start this new journey with you. A little background about myself, most of my career I've spent with the University of Iowa as an administrator. I worked at the College of Law, as a student actually, as a bookstore manager. And then later after working at Iowa Lealade, I came back as Assistant Budget Officer with the college. After that, I moved over to the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences as an administrator. While there, I did finance, I did human resources, facilities management, anything and everything that included the, the management of the department. After that, I went to the Department of Biology and also did the same. I live in Corvile, so it's, it's a short drive for me. I've been here to West Branch for a few things, some football games, you know, your Hoover days as well, and also visited your, your museum. I plan to do a lot more sightseeing, you know, in, in, here in the next month or so. Any questions?
She comes with good experience handling big budgets and putting things in proper places, grants.
So, yeah, I guess I should talk about that since I will be your, your Finance Officer. I've, I've done small and big budgets. The smallest budget that I did was about operating about seventy to eighty thousand dollars. The biggest ones have been, you know, over twenty-five million dollars. Grant accounting, a lot of contract work for that, I did procurement as well. Counts receivable, everything that you can think of, of running a department and running it well.
Right.
Sounds like somebody's gonna miss you.
Okay, did I get a motion?
Yeah. He waved.
All right.
Thank you.
If there's any discussion, I'll entertain it, if not, let's vote to approve Heidi's, Heidi Van Alken as our new Finance Officer.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Welcome.
All right. Um, I think, might start on the fourteen?
That's correct, so, not, you know, a week from today.
Correct. That's even better. Okay. Resolution twenty thirteen, approving liability proposal, liability insurance proposal with ICAP.
So moved.
Thank you. Good job, Nick, that was Nick.
You don't hear any motions.
He's second.
Marso, Mar.
Unless I'm required to by law to actually verbally.
No. This isn't a court.
Well, then I wouldn't have to recognize him, saying that, she would just know. So this is, looks like it rates went.
They went up slightly.
Up slightly, yeah. But we had a claim. Funny how that happens. You make a claim, your rates go up.
Very fortunate. Reimbursed for what we submitted for our derangement.
Yeah, that's right.
Then ICAP deals way cheaper than anything else you can get anywhere else.
Okay, motion is second, let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Ah, yes.
Resolution twenty fourteen, a resolution to approve the workers' compensation proposal with IW, IMWCA.
And it went down.
That's a motion from Nick.
And I'll say something.
I need a second.
I'll say it.
Okay.
It went down, hurry up and vote for the change.
Yeah, we're getting pretty lucky here, any other comments? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thank you, Gordon, for your work on that.
Thank you, Jose Gongora.
Jose, yeah. Is he, are we still paying him?
I'd have to talk him into submitting invoices. He doesn't submit invoices very often, that's, that's the only problem.
Does that mess things up, Gordon, if he like brings a whole bunch of them in?
It, it, it would be nice to have them come in every six months. At least, I'll talk to him.
That's not a problem.
See, he's seen him out once a week, I guess, both of you guys, right?
All right, um, next items are all discussion items. Uh, participation in the Hometown Pride Program. So, uh, I sat in on the second half of this meeting, and I don't, you didn't, I sat in on kind of, I think, and got booted up to it. This is a program. It's traveling through ECIA, I don't know if it's a federal program or Iowa program, they're administering.
They are, and they're using some of their federal dollars to match our money to buy, yeah, to buy down. So, the first year would only cost five hundred dollars for a community our size, which the second year then it goes back up to the normal rate of a thousand dollars.
But they, four more years.
Four more.
Yeah, four more years.
It's have to do with wearing masks.
It should have nothing to do with.
This is on the agenda item we're discussing.
Oh, that's wrong.
Mask requirements.
So what this is, is.
Oh, it's on, oh, just, okay.
Okay. It sounds like the main gist of it is a coaching the community to, uh,
But I have kind of a consultant that will consult on various type of things, which is kind of described here. One of the things that I knew we were gonna be interested in is the crow site. So they went back and took a look at particularly the Miller Building, the grain elevators, those sticky points on what can be done with those, and they, they know about it, and they said, yeah, that would fit underneath this. So, um, they will be willing to provide technical assistance in trying to help us move those property, move those properties along.
That's something.
What kind of assistance, I'm kinda confused, I mean, do they, do they be charging us for this, or?
Well, the, the rate that we would be paying for this annual thing would cover that. Uh, so what that might.
Is there a certain amount of hours that's involved in this, I mean, we could say we need a hundred hours worth of your time, and I'm sure that's not gonna be covered under five hundred dollars.
I didn't talk that specific to them, but, um, what I did ask on what exactly that might look like, and so they have economic development professionals like in Dubuque that have dealt with sticky kind of projects, projects like that, that they would then ask, and ask them to come down, take a look at, give us suggestions on how to maybe do land swaps, do arranged TIF agreements, do all kinds of things like that to try and make it more productive for the developer looking at it.
Go ahead.
So, all these acronyms confuse me. So this ECIA, do we already belong to them in another?
Yeah.
Form, and it, I, I don't know if it was this council or other councils that I've been on in the past, but we, every year when this would come up, we would talk about like SEDCO and this one, and, and it seemed like kind of our, our standing was, is we didn't really think they did much for us, but we's gonna go ahead and pay them so they wouldn't work against us. And this almost just seems like another way they're trying to figure out how, we're just gonna give them some more money. I mean, to do something for us that they probably should be doing with the original amount of money we give them, but they don't do it then either.
What do we do with ECIA?
I, I don't know what we do, I don't remember.
Maybe we don't.
Well, there was SEDCO, and there was one other one.
SEDCO and ICAP. You pay SEDCO sixty-six hundred dollars here, and you're right, I don't know.
There was an op in Iowa City, we.
Okay, so, these ECIA people, we, we ain't paying already to do nothing.
I don't think we do.
Okay, then I'll pay them this to do nothing for us.
We hired them to write, try to write grants.
Yeah, and then it didn't work either.
They worked in seven counties, all the seven counties of Eastern Iowa.
Yeah.
Seven or eight counties.
All right.
It seems like, for, I don't know, five hundred dollars for the first year, let's see what we get.
Yeah. How are we gonna pay for this? Can come out hotel motel tax?
Could.
I guess it could.
Could.
So, we wanna use this for.
If they could coach us on how to.
Well, I'm confused, didn't we already do that?
Yeah, they.
And then the people that came and looked at it and did nothing remotely closely what we came up with? So I don't understand.
Yeah, well, that's. But it didn't cost us anything.
Looked like little.
That's what I was talking about, we already have a plan, and it costs us anything that people aren't doing. We're gonna pay them to come and do the same plan.
There's, no, it's not that kind of plan, they may help us figure out how to deal with the Miller Building and the grain bins, and how to maybe find funding to buy those, or.
Or how to structure, how to structure agreement or developers' agreement to try and make the developer not have to take so much risk. Those kind of things.
The one developer we're working right now on that property has all that under control, so I don't see.
Yeah, I don't think a developer, we're gonna help a developer.
This developer, maybe some other developer. Most, most developers that are gonna work on that project already know what they're doing.
Yeah.
They're either.
But there's more than that, there's, there's other things they can, um, trying to run through the list here. Community goals, I, maybe they could work with CDG people.
They got fundraising for a splash pad.
Yeah, fundraising for a splash pad. It seems like a five hundred dollar, and it's.
We already got a public mural.
Yeah, we got the mural on.
I think they helped us with that, by the way.
They did.
We didn't have to pay.
They helped us spend money.
So is this something they come back next year, if we don't improve something like this, is this something they come back next year and ask us again?
They would ask us again, it looks like we're not committed for four years.
So there's ten community, or eighteen communities, and it will only help ten. Did I read that right?
It'll be pr- prorated on a per community basis up to additional ten.
Up to ten down here in the mold letter?
Yeah.
Up to ten communities.
They'll prorate it for more.
That must be per county, because there's eight in our county and twelve in Delaware County. I, I don't know what that, I can't quite figure that out.
Maybe they're just doing that up to ten communities for their annual budget, they're just estimating that ten communities are gonna join, that they don't really figure that out of all these people, everybody's going to participate.
Right.
That's how I'm reading it.
Okay, so this is just a discussion item right now. Yes?
I guess my, I'm, I'm thinking, are there, are there some projects that they kind of listed here that we have that they could help us this year? We have some kind of a project that.
I'd have to, we'd have to talk with one of the, with Kelly or.
Marla, yeah.
See what she could.
Well, if you, if you just look at the samples, tourism brochure, we could probably use that.
About interstate signage.
If you're asking, it ain't a very good one.
I know we had one when we were doing the, the new housing. Didn't the CDG make one?
Did we not?
CDG has one. Maybe they would help, help us with my interstate signage project.
Me the gasco property.
Roger wants to put a sign on a silo.
No, I've given up on the silo.
But, about a pavilion, about a pavilion project for the farmer's market. So we could put a pavilion either down there by.
Casey's?
No, the Casey's side or down here where they do the farmer's market.
Okay, we need a pavilion at the W.
You know, welcome to West Branch, and you say it's a pizza.
Okay, so, I think we should bring this as a resolution. That's all we gotta say about it.
Okay.
Let it come talk about it?
Sure.
Is that possible?
It's not a bad idea.
I mean, I read it.
Okay.
I mean, how many groups, we already have three, we're already in. We already talked. That's what I'm talking about, we've already reached out to three or four different groups, and so far we've gotten, since I've been here, a whole nitty squab besides the CDG.
SEDCO and ICAP exist to bring economic development into the community. This is to help, this ECIA and its hometown is, exists to better our community.
So far, I think this CDG is about the, that's the.
That's money.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, that's, that's, you know, only, at least I've been here and been paying attention as far as, you know, CDGs, and I think if what money you have got, I would say good.
So do they have a representative that could come and?
Yes. Kelly or Marla down here, one of them too?
And I only question it because you're gonna have one guy full-time for ten communities. I mean, that's right.
Well, they, they got people on staff, on paid staff that would travel.
FTE, one full-time equivalent person for the ten towns that sign up for them. And they might add another one if ten more people hop in.
If we get, get one person to work a month with us, that's, that's worth five hundred bucks.
Well, this is, my question is, are we guaranteed any hours? What if Delhi comes in and goes, hey, we got a whole bunch of cool stuff we wanna do, and that guy.
We could have them come mow a yard for us, and we'd be money.
I'm just asking, I just wanna know more.
Okay, we'll try to get someone here. All right, let's move on, item ten. Concerning aspects and or programs desired to West Branch Housing Trust. So, when we start asking TIF, TIF asking for the Meadows.
Yep.
Yep. Some of that money has to be set aside for low to moderate income prop programs.
Right, correct, correct.
Apparently you figured out that eight to nine thousand dollars a year annually?
That's fascinating, that. So, and it doesn't have to be limited to these, that I, I mentioned, these are just some that I just was able to grab. I mean, so is there some other ideas that you may have, some other issues that you think would help the community? We can build a program around that. I just wanted to know where to kind of start, what does the council kind of have a flavor for? Housing rehabs are, are, you know, very documented programs. Weatherization, I don't know if I mentioned that, but weatherization is, is also can be used. Weatherization, I don't know if I mentioned that, but weatherization is, is also can be used. Down payment assistance for helping um new home, first time home buyers, low moderate income families, maybe transitioning um. That, those programs are there. And then um I, I always had to, I used a program in the past where I've used Habitat for Humanity Homes to infill some of the vacant lots in town. I mean, that, we have very, very many of them, but, but. You know, you can get a Habitat for Humanity house and put it towards that and they work real good with working with the city and then using volunteer work to actually build and.
You have two Habitat homes in town, one? One or two.
I know we have one.
One.
An orange for sure.
I think that's it. Pardon?
So do we know what the medium income for West France is?
I know it's off of HUD guidelines, but I don't know exactly for the city as a whole.
It might be in the comprehensive plan that P and Z did. I don't know the number, but I think it might be.
Those are fifty-five thousand.
Those fifty-three.
Okay. Average household income.
Stuff come out. They just did it not too long ago, twenty twenty.
Huh?
Twenty twenty was like.
I know, but when, I never heard the results.
It's not, COVID delayed it in October. This one we'll find out. October, September.
Yeah, they, they were behind that whole time.
I was curious.
So I have a program idea. What about doing like a revolving loan program, but doing it for like new home buyer or home repairs or something? So somebody has made a whole lot of money and they got this crappy home and it was given revolving loan so they could fix up their crappy home to make it look better.
That's what, that's what I have in mind too.
I mean.
New siding.
Help somebody.
What's the benefit to the community?
Absolutely.
That's a benefit to the community.
And a benefit to us.
Right. So I'm not a fan of a payment, down payment assistance or first time home buyer, cause that's just giving people money. I'd rather give people money to fix up their home.
Yeah, but it could be a first time home buyer that's buying an older home.
An older, well, if it were an older home.
But there's.
It's not gonna be a new home anyway.
You gotta, you gotta meet the level.
That's right.
Those programs already exist though. I mean, you know, there's, there's really not a program that helps people fix up.
Right.
You know, get new windows in their house. I mean, I guess there is for.
So I will tell you that EC cog, the one that Johnson County's in, which is ECIA cog, they help apply for housing rehabilitation grants for people in town, which is one of those programs that I'm guessing they can help do too, which are all income, income verified also.
ECIA is in charge of the section eight program in all of Eastern Iowa County.
All those counties, cause there's not a, like Iowa City's in charge of Johnson County.
Do we even have any section eight?
You, I bet you probably do, you just don't.
Yeah, we wouldn't know it.
The median income is currently sixty-two now.
I looked it up in three or four different websites. I had it like sixty-one to sixty-three.
Depending on how big your household is, yeah.
Librarying guy.
Okay, so these are, I like Colton's suggestion.
Yeah. No, that's the eighty percent. At the eighty percent uh.
Sixty-two, eighty percent?
No.
No.
And sixty-two is.
Medium income is.
So you gotta be eighty percent.
Sixty-two.
Forty-nine, forty-eight.
So no more than eighty percent of the sixty.
Um.
We can't make more than fifty.
What else do you wanna know, Redmond, from?
Okay, so I'm, I'm here, uh revolving loan program kinda focused on.
Housing rehab.
Housing rehab.
Yeah.
I like the revolving loan program idea because then it builds and so with the money we loan out that we get back and then the money that we keep building, the program can just grow and grow and grow.
You don't lose it. You don't lose the principal.
Is this something we would charge at like an interest rate to?
I don't know if I'd do that.
Maybe extremely low.
Yeah, I mean like a half a percent or one percent.
If it's allowed.
Yeah.
You can mix it the program if you want.
We already, I thought we had a hundred thousand in.
Doesn't, that's how we pay for the sidewalk projects downtown.
Yeah.
Hundred thirty. We don't have any plans for that. We need to save it for the next phase, I suppose.
Yeah.
And it was.
So we put a lemon on, but they still, some kind of a match or.
Just we could set up some sort of, I can take.
We ain't gotta figure all that out tonight.
No, but I, I like the revolving, I mean, it, it gives people that can't.
Yeah.
Afford to do something, I can't go to the bank cause I can't afford it. This is the way they could come and get some money and improve their, improve their neighborhood.
Yes.
You know, what I find.
Maybe we could buy a lawnmower.
Especially from like, especially, especially out in the mobile home community, what I found was a lot of those people wanna do those things, they just can't, you know, and. So if you give, I'm sure there's people in town that are in the same boat, you know, that they'd love to have a new deck or they'd love to do it, but they just can't afford it, you know?
Okay, I'm sure that, let's move on. Yeah, usually, they, they usually apply, or they, they usually follow the income if they're easily on social security or stuff.
I just wanted, I didn't know, there's some weird.
No, we don't allow old people.
No, I know. I meant within the HUD guidelines, not us as a city. I don't know enough about the HUD stuff.
That's a lot.
I reason I'm allowing, I mean, I think something that'd be crazy to this country.
Okay, let's move on, item eleven. Um regarding the remaining public improvements related to Cedar's Edge subdivision. So what we have here is, I don't know what, fifty feet of, a hundred feet maybe.
Gravel.
It's, it's good chip and seal.
Some of it's gravel.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's always been ambiguous as to who's, currently it's been ambiguous as to who actually owns it.
So. So in the developing of this whole thing, it, it was pretty much almost to the end of the development when I, when Leslie kind of informed me that this chunk of property actually goes with the golf course, which was crazy in my mind, because it's always been the access to Greenview. And I, never in my mind would have thought that that was part of Greenview, but all the lawyers have found that it is part of Greenview.
The road is?
The entrance into Greenview off of Cedar Johnson Road, that section is part of the golf course. And it's maintained by the city for fifty years.
Since the sixties.
Wow.
So.
So subsequently Jerry had plans drawn up to, you know, approve it.
He would love to.
Yeah, I know. I guarantee I can get a seat out of him.
He would love to.
Two proposals I would have would be to dedicate this chunk of ground to the city to be improved at the time of Cedar Johnson Road. Or my other would be to ask the city for some assistance on finishing this section of road.
Or third closing.
It's not an alley.
You don't do, you don't have to.
So I went out and looked at it. I've actually, I actually talked to you months, months ago about this. And I personally believe we, we should probably just take it as the city, let them give it to us. It's not his responsibility to. But it, it would be his, the gravel area, that it would be his responsibility to finish the pavement up to the, up to the chip and seal that exists.
Clean it up.
So to, to reiterate on that is that the concrete now has been stopped at the beginning of the radius of this design. So this is designed to have radiuses that go into the Greenview Drive. Has concrete radiuses that come wrap around there. So the concrete that's there is the stop of that, or is the beginning or the end, if you wanna look at.
Or the straight.
Or that, or that radius to start or that intersection. Um that's why they stopped it there. I'm, I, I would be willing to, you know, when they come in and do the improvements on a bad section of Cedar Johnson Road, which is from there to the north, that Matt's already said that when they come and do the chip and seal, they're gonna fix that, that section of road, that have them chip and seal up to the concrete. Right now, right now it's just gravel, yeah.
Ten to twelve feet?
Just gravel, yeah.
I'll do with that.
Would you pay for that?
I would pay for that, yeah.
Cause it's gonna need, when the road gets put in, that would all get tore out anyway.
So the other thing of this is, and when we were doing the development, which is doing all my sewer and water, we've already got the manhole that go at the intersection of Cedar Johnson Road and now.
So you've paid for the engineering already?
The engineering's done. The manholes are already there, so just a matter of.
So we would get those, would you give that to us?
Yeah, they're designed for that section.
Oh, he's digging them up, taking them out.
Already got them set.
Yeah.
I would, I was paid for them. I would think we would want to own that portion as a city. If it's the entrance there.
And then let's work out a deed to.
Either that or he could go ahead and pave it and then put a little toll booth there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I'm not worried about.
It'd be, it'd be closed.
Rob Goff.
Why this, I mean.
Yeah.
We all gotta consider that this whole property, Greenview, the golf course, all was owned by previous banker.
One.
Which developed this whole thing and somehow.
There are a lot of goofy things that got on with that property.
There are.
The other end of Greenview, yeah.
We could, we could call this since we're up on a new one and then.
Well, that's another chance. It makes construction.
Years from now, we can pour that one in.
Yeah, you're not gonna, you're not gonna throw that. Okay, so.
See, so that's where I'm at. If, why would you? If his is already paved, why would we actually chip and seal?
It's just a little.
That little strip, why would, why would we not curb and gutter and?
It will be eventually. This is just the chip and seal, it's only like ten feet. The, the end of his concrete and the beginning of Greenview Drive.
Well, we say it will be eventually a lot, but nothing.
But we'll put this under the Cedar Johnson Road project.
I'm more in a discussion of saying I think we just take it.
She does.
Well, we are, that's.
What we wanna do with it after the fact, I think we can have more discussion.
All we're asking them to do is to finish it up so we don't have a gravel chunk sitting there. Give us something so we got these gravels.
That's fine.
When he gives it to us. Then we can fix it whenever you wanna do it once.
I'd rather do it the right way, but.
Now's not the time. Okay, so it sounds like we're all pretty much the same page. Jerry with chip and seal, the finish of it.
I can name it Jerry Lane.
It's already named.
It's already.
Serenity.
So we've actually confused a lot of people when we put the cul-de-sac in there. We, that entrance is now Serenity.
Yeah, and I don't like.
And then when you turn, turn onto Green.
Um.
Otherwise.
Yeah, I see.
Sound confused when you get together.
Turn onto Greenview and then.
So what we'll do next meeting would be accept the deed for that part, so we just gotta figure out what the description is.
So it'd be in the corner of Cedar Johnson.
Good luck.
Of all Cedar Johnson. See, you can hash it out.
Have a survey.
Well, I, I'm assuming Brian can give us a survey. Brian can give us a. Yeah.
Okay, we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Fireworks. Before we even get started, this is in no way. He has nothing to do with this.
I was in Florida.
Just for this, right? Um, so. The national park system, national, is making it more difficult for fireworks to, to occur in national parks. This is a national park. As a result, we're looking for, we may have to go somewhere else with fireworks, literally, to launch them off. So. We got together with Mr. Firework Z, Tim Z, and me and Matt Goodell and Leslie was there and we walked over to Covey Park. Specifically. Cemetery.
I thought, I was just thinking, that sounds like the best place to shoot it over, shoot them over Covey Park.
To the north of.
I could look at them and look back.
Yep.
You're, you're, you're really gonna shoot fireworks off?
Over the top of the, over the.
Out of the cemetery. That is total disrespect.
It's not in the graveyard cemetery, it's, it's in the grassy knoll.
About the pipeline? My only concern would be.
Are we used to the pipeline between the cemetery and that area? That we're talking about?
I didn't get that, I threw that map away.
Okay, so I, I, no matter what site we use or we look for, I have concern because there's so much debris fallout of fireworks that if you're gonna fire them off right next to Covey Park, you're gonna be cleaning that park up if the wind is blowing out of the east.
We're aware of that.
There's a lot of debris.
I haven't called Cheryl. Yeah, you're gonna blow up a bunch of fireworks right over the top of Crestview. Pardon?
Cheryl's not gonna be there much longer.
No matter where we're gonna fire them off, that stuff landed, who cleaned the stuff up before?
Nobody.
Parks are.
Pete did. If the wind's out of the south going north, it, it ends up in the cornfield or bean field, which we don't own, we'll have to notify them.
Or a golf course.
Or the golf. That much would land on the golf course?
Yeah, we had one time when it blew, when it was over there, everything glued to the golf.
Well, we fire them off at the golf course and then they'll blow somewhere else.
They used to.
My understanding, they used to years ago.
Yes. I was sixteen years old.
Does.
Okay, so we may not have a choice though. School? Okay, I, I talked to Marty, he's really nervous about it. Because we've got that big flat roof for one thing. Big old flat roof.
I guess when Tipton did.
And it's under construction.
Other school buildings there.
He's real nervous about the construction equipment blowing up. God forbid something gets loose. Um where li- or construction equipment gets damaged, this year in particular. There's just so many buildings around, if it goes, say, gets shut off at the baseball diamond, I don't know where else they would go.
You could go back at the. Well, you got the road sign there, I'm sure there's.
It's, it's just that big flat roof.
Sign that I'm sure we probably can't shoot them off by.
Um Tim Z was real nervous about the high school because of that roof. It's a rubber roof. So, we're back to the Covey Park. We would set up a perimeter of what, four hundred feet?
On Braddock Park.
It's too far down in the.
Down in the hole, it's like outside everything, nobody will see it.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
What about, and she's not wrong, what about the lagoons? You're gonna start to.
And that's a low point of town.
See, I thought about that too.
That's a low point of town.
The industrial part?
You wouldn't have viewing.
Way spotter.
With, so, so when we talked about.
You don't park everybody by the lagoon.
Yeah, so when we talked about um Covey Park, we walked, we thought we were gonna maybe do it off of a diamond, cause they do it in diamonds, but we didn't really want them to do it there. So he took us up to the top of the hill behind the main shed. It's got a bit of a slope, but he said normally that's what they like anyway. Uh but you have to have four hundred and twenty-five feet of nobody in there, so I don't know which field is which, but the one closest to the playground, I guess.
The north field.
The northeast corner. That, we, we thought that'd be a perfect viewing area, but that's too close. So we, we will have people, we would have people sit in the other two diamonds and um.
So people could come to Covey Park to watch, very close up.
Yeah, so we talked about having um the Hoover stage also moving with it, because that's where the music plays. Right now, if we move it to the loop, we have to buy lighting, so we have a clear pathway for people to leave after the fireworks. Covey Park has lights. We can just turn the lights on, people can exit the park and when everyone's gone, we can shut the lights back off.
So are we for sure out of the park or are they just?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
But Tim's or Mullen's, we were. But Tim's or Mullen, this, we were presented with a four-page checklist, an additional requirements checklist. And there were several things on it that Tim needed to provide, as well as me trying to provide, which I feel like is kind of ambiguous, I really don't know what I'm making up as I try to figure out all of this stuff. Um, but then, um, Tim had actually reached out to Seth and said that there are some things on the checklist that he can't provide. There's no way he can provide them, because the manufacturer doesn't provide him the stuff, so there's things that he can't even do, so before we go too far down this road, him trying to create all this documentation and me trying to create all this documentation, and then finding out they're still gonna say no, we wasted a lot of time and now we have no fireworks, we have no place to shoot them off, so we're kinda at that point where we're kind of at an impasse, and maybe this may not be the ideal place, but at this point in time, it's all we've got.
What about if we went Crowe, we own the Crowe site and we own that park across the creek? What if we found a center area somewhere in there where we have the distances of every, everywhere? Cause what, what is there? There's metal silos that ain't gonna burn down.
Well, there's fuel storage though, there's, there's, there's sources of, there's there's bulk, bulk storage of fuels.
Yeah, well even, when we stood up on the hill behind the shed, and you looked down at that first bald diamond, we thought, oh, that'd be a great viewing. God, this range front, it's, it's too close. That, that's way closer, I mean, that's, you know, four and twenty-five feet, I guess is a lot of parts, but then you realize in the Crowe site, I would, I, I don't know how we even close to having the perimeter.
What's an eight hundred foot diameter circle, eight hundred feet diameter? It'd have to be in the center, I don't, I think Roy Lewis's place would be. In Mexico Lindo would be all in. The, the three buildings, um, ten buildings will all be in the radius. Unless it's not a bad idea.
You just can't have her. You just can't have people in that area?
We can't have people in that area, so we have to rope that off.
You can have, you can have buildings.
Well, I didn't hear all the conversation that we, Melissa.
He's okay with a steel building, a steel building is fine. Flat roof building, he didn't like.
Still the Miller building.
Or single building.
And it's a flat roof building too, but that could, that could solve two problems.
Oh, have you seen the Crowe site?
Okay, it's, that would be a lot more work.
I think stuff's out loud.
Again, you talk about when you, where is everybody gonna sit?
I understand, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's different locations, but where's everybody gonna sit?
Well, we, I mean, closer than four hundred yards.
Right, well, I said, and two bald diamonds are far enough away.
Matter of regulation, it's too close to the interstate too.
I was thinking of the interstate.
I was gonna say, is the interstate an issue at that point?
They don't like smoke.
That was one of the things on the checklist was, you know, like clearing airspace and, you know, and people have talked for years about, I mean, being so close to the interstate and does that cause a problem? I, I don't think anyone's ever wrecked, but there's always, I guess, that risk.
People flow way down.
Well, Covey Park, I mean, I think the little committee that met that day seemed really fired up about Covey Park. We could move the band stage to Covey Park. Open up the concession stand, the restrooms are there.
Lights.
Lights are there. Parking is easy.
Another viewing area could be, um.
Walking lines.
Field, another, again, again, grassy field, another restroom, some parking, not a main street.
Just seemed like a good fit, and I think it'd be worth trying this year and maybe next year we could hammer out something else, I don't know.
Yeah, Roger was going to check with, um, Sh- Cheryl at the.
I forgot to call her this week.
At the care center, and then also the pipeline, because we wanted to make sure there wasn't an issue with the pipeline, because, you know, remember what, what goes up must come down.
Yeah, but that pipeline's thirty-some inches deep.
We thought maybe we should have them fly over, make sure there wasn't any gas.
Okay, so this, maybe, we may move, keep moving toward Covey Park. Also, we may keep moving toward, we never really did decide if we're gonna keep trying for them.
Um, Melissa did ask, um, after our meeting, um, maybe we should have a test um, a test. Yeah, just to make sure it was high enough and where, where it was visible, because I think you guys said that a couple of years ago when we lowered them, people stood around town and kinda looked to see if you could see them. And again, I think it's one of those things where, you know, years ago in Iowa City, I mean, you go to where the fireworks are, you can't expect to sit on your porch and see them from everywhere, so.
I think we all concluded, you're not gonna see them from downtown. And we certainly weren't gonna see them from, if the Hoover stage are at the park in the circle, you're not gonna see them. So it's a, it's a whole new paradigm shift of getting people to Covey Park and.
It might be our new normal. So that was one thing.
Okay, so this, do we have to make a resolution? We don't have to resolve, do we?
As a committee, we just need to decide if we need to make a change and we just need to.
We'll probably ask this council for a blessing in some way. Okay. All right, I guess that's it for tonight. City Administrator.
Made pretty good time, concerned, took us an hour to get out of the consent agenda.
So we did get our, um, facility plan, our, our early drawings in, so I think what I'm gonna do is scan it in and, and put it on, online, for people penalties. You know, if you get into, I know Nick likes stuff like looking at plans like this, so.
You don't have to scan that, doesn't Dave have it on a PDF?
He may, he may. Yeah. Um, so one of the things I did wanna kinda get some direction from council tonight. Is, uh, we have our, um, geo-technical engineering, um, uh, I picked out, there was a couple of proposals, oh.
Thank you.
We had a couple of proposals, one from TerraCom and another one from, um, Borough InterTech. Yeah, um, TerraCom's a little higher, but, um, B and K has history working with them and their data kinda lines up with the formatting and everything, so they could do it with either, but they do a lot of work already with, uh, TerraCom, and they basically had recommended that we go TerraCom. So, um, me and Matt agreed, we were okay with going with TerraCom, even though we're a little higher, but I wanted to find out if that's okay with council. Uh, if it is, then I'll just go ahead and, and, um, let P and K know before with TerraCom.
That's more just a little bit.
But it's Penny's considering the cost.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that, but it's, if they're doing the same work, how can one of them be two thousand dollars, I mean, a third cheaper?
But.
We can, I can bring it before council.
I'd use Bron, I'd use Bron out of, out the golf place, so.
I've always used TerraCom.
Say, no lie. Never used any of them. Why is TerraCom such the favorite party here?
B and K uses them all the time, and the data that they collect, I guess, is just gonna smoothly seamlessly transition into their.
Their system?
Their system.
But, so that might save us some money.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I get it, I mean, I, I get it all. It's what a fifteen billion dollar project or whatever.
Hopefully seven, seven to eight.
We're talking about two thousand dollars.
But, just so long as this doesn't happen a lot.
Redmond, do you mind if I jump in here?
Please, I didn't know you were there.
So when we asked them for proposals, we asked them to provide the geotechnical scope that's consistent with designing a wastewater treatment lagoon. Your own DNR has an entire chapter on what's required there. While they're both giving us information for the geotechnical aspect of it, TerraCom is a little bit more comprehensive in their analysis, and, uh, they also look for when they're doing the soil borings, um, a few things that might impact what we need to do from a dirtwork standpoint, uh, seal on the bottom of that and so forth, so they, they give us a little bit more information that would definitely be worthwhile. We could go back and ask Bron for a similar scope, but we found that in working with TerraCom, we just get a little bit more comprehensive report from them, gives us better information for design.
All right. Come back with that, it's gonna be very similar.
All right, thank you, Dave. So I think we got consensus.
All right. Thank you. I really think that was it.
Are we gonna be asked little information like this throughout this whole process?
Yeah, you have to approve that contract though. For TerraCom.
That's a contract between us and them?
Yeah, the, the TerraCom contracts are separate from the engineering contract. Yeah, there's a, there's a contract, so I, I can sign off on it now and just let them know that they can report. I, I just didn't know if council wanted to have that actually come through as a, a, agenda item or not, because we, we could do it any other way.
Okay, you can go to an agenda item on every.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't want an agenda.
That's why he brought it up this way.
Okay, I get it.
So there will be a few things that come up along the way that are specifically not included in our scope of work, if we have to do an archaeological investigation, if we have to do, um, sampling in the lagoon for sludge depth, things like that. Those are not things that we would typically do, and rather than you paying us to subcontract them, we just get proposals and have you pay the contractor directly.
Or not be allowed.
No, there, there really shouldn't be, Colton, I think, uh, sludge judging, we'd probably be looking at New Traject coming out and doing that and providing report. And then again, if, if we get into anything with the environmental review that we need to do archaeological investigation, that would be something else, but it appears that that's probably not going to be required.
All right, what else you got, Redmond? And then the other thing, uh, the home base, Cedar County being that Rottness came, and he asked about if we wanted to participate officially and what might it look like?
I would like to place on the, uh, agenda for, uh, next meeting, uh, to discuss the uh, possibility of new home buyers, our new home builders in West Branch that are veterans, we waive their property taxes, city property taxes for one year.
Is that part of the home base program?
Yeah, it could be.
It's worth, uh, what, two thousand bucks tops?
Depends on how big a house it is.
Yeah, well, it would, it would kind of.
Kind of depends on when you're assessed, when you build it, if you're just on new homes, Tom?
I don't know, I just wanna discuss it. You know, some, some, similar to what we're doing now that we're gonna quit doing, uh, how, how do, how do we do that now?
Well, the, the first, the taxes they pay are usually very little because the house was a, um, it, it's a very lot for the first time. That's why we had this five-year thing, so you have to think about how long it would last or something.
Uh, we can bring that up.
I would, I'm, I'd like it to look more like something like this, which would be a whole lot cheaper. Would be, first of all, not just included to new homes, if you're a veteran and you work in Cedar County and you live in Cedar County and you, you're moving to Cedar County, you know, then specifically for us, West Branch.
Let's talk about it next meeting, how's that? I think we were talked out.
Give them their, the deposit, they gotta pay for their water. You know, I mean, because you're, with what you're proposing, the person that can't afford to build a new house and is a veteran, don't get nothing.
Let's think about it.
That'll be agenda any way you wanna work it.
Discussion.
Uh, what else you got, Redmond?
I'll pass. That's the one minute to talk, I thought it was probably being talked out.
What else we got? Staff? Any other, any staff wanna comment, anything?
I have something quick.
Go ahead, Matt.
Lynch's will be starting on the water main out there at Greenview this week, uh, for the Greenview extension. Uh, Barnhart's will be moving the siren, and they're gonna do that after that's moved, and then Lynch's will be starting on the College Street Water Main next Monday. We'll start with the sewer part of it on Monday, and they'll be doing some sawing on Fourth Street also, so we'll have to shut down the intersection of College and Fourth in order to do that. So we'll, we'll have detours set up and we'll talk to Cargill and the Vet Clinic, and we'll get detours set up kind of ahead of time, so people know where to go. So, that should have the water main project done before the end of the fiscal year.
Why, why we got you on there, Matt? Has there been anything, um, on the signage out at um, Cedar Johnson Road in Greenview, that three-way intersection there, the stop sign, is there any other signage we're, we're working on for that?
Yeah, I, I believe, uh, Nevin talked to Chief Hannah about what signs to get put in, and he, he ordered signs the other day. So I think there's eight or ten more signs that'll have to go up in order to make that how it's supposed to be.
She got weddings out there every Friday, Saturday, the rest of summer.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep. Oh, I guess we started on the parking behind the town hall today too, and we'll, we're gonna pour that tomorrow morning. Um, and then next week, we'll also start on the Casey's Lot, or the old Casey's Lot, and try to get that going.
Wow, good job.
Yep.
Just when it gets hot out.
Okay, anybody, uh, any of us? I have nothing, comments from council?
Oh, yeah. I brought it up. Three weeks ago, not to this, the ice cream ticket? Before we did talk about if they had room for it, remember if you wear a helmet? Yeah, if you wear a helmet, you get, yeah, we call the ice cream ticket.
Don't know if he's on that or not.
I think we've heard suggestions for that.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I was just curious for an update, that was it, because I'm starting to see them all. School's out.
So, uh, that program's, uh, in place, and we will be probably have already handed cards out, so I worked out an arrangement with, uh, Main Street Suites. We're gonna hand them a card and they're gonna bill us as they come in instead of pre-buying them, so it'll be a program that we can continue into the future.
Those all his kids?
Yeah. Wow.
Uh, where we at? Um, I guess I'm ready for adjournment, emotion to adjournment. All those in favor say aye.